Thank you very much and welcome back to September, Tuesday, September 12th, Committee of the Whole Meeting with the District of Squamish. I'm Andrew Hamilton, Acting Mayor for the month of September. Following a rainy bike ride tour of Squamish, we are back in council chambers for staff report on the 2023 downtown parking study. I'll pass over to Dave Moreau and the consultant from the study. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Dave Moreau, Director of Major Projects at the District of Squamish. And I have with me today Andres Baez, Senior Transportation Planning Engineer from Morrison Herschfield. And as you mentioned, we're here to discuss the scope findings and recommendations of the 2023 downtown parking study. And with that, I'll turn it over to Andres to go through the presentation.
All right. Thank you, Dave. Thank you, everyone. Good afternoon. My name is Andres Baez. I'm with Morrison Herschfield. I've been Senior Transportation Engineer with the company for about 12 years. So Morrison Herschfield was retained by the district to conduct a downtown parking study update, following up on a similar study conducted in 2017. And our study essentially included an assessment of the current capacity and utilization conditions in the downtown parking area, forecasting potential parking demand over the next five years, reviewing best practices in parking management in similar jurisdictions, and recommending parking demand management strategies for future consideration. Let's go next. So in terms of the study goals, the study, well, the study area actually included the residential and commercial core area in the downtown. And it was intended to achieve the following main goals. Essentially to assess the current and anticipated future parking needs, to develop a parking management strategy for a sustainable and integrated downtown transportation system that supports other district goals, including economic growth and foster healthy and active living. And to develop a framework and a plan for the potential introduction of paid parking in the downtown core. So I'd just like to highlight a few key trends that we discover in the investigation. The Squamish downtown obviously has been growing steadily over the past decade and is expected to continue experiencing rapid growth. When a significant portion of this growth is, will come in the form of commercial space and residential units being added to the downtown area, as well as the anticipated residential and commercial growth in the Squamish Ocean from development area. So there are numerous building permits that have been approved and a number of development applications that are currently under review. Obviously, another key trend is the increase in tourist visitations. And so the post-pandemic trends in terms of influencing housing demand and travel patterns, as many people can now work remotely and enjoy the outer. So and there are also time, you know, we wanted to understand if some of these post-pandemic trends have also influenced the peak parking demand periods. As people, you know, working schedules have changed and are becoming more flexible. So that was part of the investigation and the data collection task. Some other parking issues and concerns have been raised historically in the downtown core specifically. And so there appear to be more issues about occupancy that have been raised to administration by some of the residents historically. So so based on the data collected and compared to the 2017 baseline, we, we found that there is a steady increase of between 12 to 19% in the parking occupancy in the commercial downtown core during the last five years, which although is still below sort of the, the 85% occupancy, which is considered in the industry as, as a threshold for capacity conditions. It shows that should this trend continues, the downtown core would definitely experience on-street peak parking over capacity conditions, specifically in the downtown core within the next five years, based on the development that is happening right now. The residential area, as a general finding, we, although it has also grown, it should still be well under capacity over the next five years. You can see on the screen, the table underneath, it highlights the the parking data collection that we need on a weekday and on a typical weekday in May and on a typical weekend on, in June. So there is a comparison between the situation in 2017 and the situation in 2022 when the, when the surveys was conducted. So just a quick overview of the study approach and the methodology. We essentially started with a data collection and a very detailed inventory of all the on-street parking spaces. Then we follow an assessment of the existing utilization and occupancy of on-street parking supply block by block. And in the downtown core, we also measured the turnover conditions. Then the third step was forecasting the on-street parking demand over the next five years, based on information provided by administration as to developments that are in line, happening and expected over the next five years. And then we follow with the analysis of future supply and demand imbalances and try to identify the street blocks or areas of concern. And, and then once we identify issues and opportunities, we look at, we review best practices to manage parking demand in similar jurisdictions. And finally, we recommend a framework and a plan for a potential parking management strategy in the downtown. Just going quickly through the first step, the data collection, like I mentioned, we, we conducted a detailed inventory of every on-street parking space in the downtown area, including all the parallel parking stalls, diagonal stores or angled parking stalls, 90-degree stalls on-street, accessible parking stalls and electric vehicles equipped stalls. So we have all that detailed information for the, like I mentioned, for the detail weekend and detail, sorry, a weekend in May and a and a weekday in June. In total, the inventory show that the district has, or the downtown area has 1,463 parking stalls that were counted. Here is a sort of a high overview of the existing parking demand and supply that we discover. The comparative graphic shows how parking utilization in the downtown is, is shared by various land uses. And so it shows the actual occupancy over time. So some of the key takeaways here is that on weekdays, peak occupancy happens between roughly noon to 2:00 PM lunchtime, roughly, mainly driven by overlapping of retail offices and restaurant activity. And after 6:00 PM, retail and office parking demand obviously ends, whereas residential demand starts increasing. Overall, the peak parking occupancy on Wednesdays, on, sorry, on weekdays is less than 50% of the existing supply, as you can see on the screen right now. And for, for weekends, the peak parking aggregated demand increases sharply approximately by 11:30, mostly due to started retail and restaurant activity and stayed consistently until the evening. Where, you know, restaurants' activities start, so declining after 9:00, 9:00 PM. Overall, the aggregated peak parking demand on weekends is slightly over the 50% of the existing supply combined in downtown residential and commercial again. Like I mentioned, we, part of the detailed inventory, we were able to also measure existing capacity block by block. So the maps that you see on the screen that are also included in the report, categorized capacity demand, existing capacity demand by, in, in terms of low, moderate, high demand and at-capacity or over-capacity blocks. And generally, as you can see on the right-hand side, on weekends, that's where the downtown core, Cleveland Avenue, Main, Main Street, Victoria and Winnipeg, they all sort of experience over-capacity conditions during the peak times. And that's where all the reds on each block that you can see. The residential area again, like I mentioned before, is generally underparked with a few exceptional blocks that just continue to have cars park all day. So the turnaround is not that big, but it's just like, and some of these residential blocks are just completely full during the day. But there are a few cases like that, but generally the residential area is under capacity. So the, like I mentioned, based on the information provided by the district regarding anticipated five-year development currently in stream, in stream meaning applications approved or in review within the study area. So we forecasted the additional on-street parking demand as expected during the typical peak periods. So the table on the top is essentially the aggregated of all the development by land use that is expected in stream over the next five years. And then the table below, it's our estimation of, of the on-street parking demand generated by such development. So now we basically added the baseline model. We added the anticipated on-street parking demand over the next five years. And those are the two graphics that you see on a typical weekday and on a typical weekend. So yeah, essentially, the peak occupancy within the next five years may reach over 60% on weekdays, which is the left graphic. And, and about 70% on weekends, it may be expected. We also included the, the lower dotted line. In conversations with administration, they, they point out that some of the existing angled parking, it may be reconfigured, as some of these blocks actually redevelop. So we actually consider a potential reduction in the existing supply. And that's the lower dotted line that you see on the screen. But it's still generally the, the takeaway here is that the, there is still capacity. But, you know, again, like I mentioned, if, if the trends keep following, like you could really expect over-capacity conditions, especially in the downtown core over the next five years. Sorry. So once again, like once the demand was forecasted and allocated block by block, the report identifies also future streets that may experience over-capacity issues. So, so administration can keep a closer look at those over the next five years. And like I mentioned before, I think clearly on the right-hand side, you can see the five-year projection for weekends. And, and clearly, most of the downtown core street would experience those high-demand intensity peak periods. And as a result, some nearby street, residential streets may be impacted because people start finding, trying to find spots on nearby residential streets. So in terms of the principles, I guess, to coming up with our guiding recommendations. So we review best practices in the industry and, and some of the other jurisdictions that I mentioned before. Mainly, I think the, the main concept here for our recommendation is something that in the industry is known as a Park Once and Walk District, which you can see the illustration on the right-hand side, which basically means that the supply of parking on a district like downtown Squamish should be shared by all users so that people can park once and then, you know, run multiple areas by walking or cycling on a walking-friendly environment. So the key idea is that the existing parking supply can be efficiently used as a district and not caring too much about individual land users' demands, which is generally well documented in the industry that leads to over-supply of parking conditions. The other key concept here was the, also something emerging in the industry, a terminal term called the 50-minute walkable city or the 50-minute district, which essentially revolves around the idea of having opportunities and services for people, residents, busy thirds to be accessible by walking distance of up to 50 minutes or less. So in, in our opinion, downtown Squamish is, is, is the perfect context for that idea. And it's been a very compact urban fabric, having a grid system, road and, and some of the other programs that you have been working on to make it the downtown more bicycle and pedestrian-friendly. And like I mentioned, we also look at parking management strategies in similar, and similar contexts and size jurisdictions, including Banff, Canmore in Alberta, Pentington and Whistler. So there is a whole summary of our findings in the report as well that you can take a look. So only note, I think on the screen you have our recommendation for managing future parking demand in the downtown core. It's, it's explained and further discussed in the report in greater detail, but here's just a quick overview. We provided two different options for a paid parking management strategy in the downtown core, including having a differential fee based on demand periods and, and capacity. That's what it's called in the industry as perform, performance-based paid parking schemes. Essentially, you, you charge more during the peak periods and that your scheme is flexible to be modified as, based on the demand. Or the option B, just having a flat fee, flat fee rate. And, and in both, in both options, we also included a residence exempt permit program to mitigate potential impacts for downtown residents. So in essence, I think the, you would see in the report that the suggested streets for paid parking are those in the downtown core, again, including Cleveland Avenue, Second Avenue, Winnipeg Street, Victoria Street and Main Street. There are details about the hours of implementation for each option in the report, as well as the technology and enforcement recommendations that we provide, and as well as a detailed explanation of what, how the resident accept zone program will look like or may look like. So just to conclude, I guess, in terms of the phased approach and recommendations, the report included 47 specific actions in short, medium and long term that, in our opinion, we provided to the administration so they can sort of pick and choose the, the right strategy for the, for the local context and, and scope those for a future plan. Some of these recommendations includes bylaw and policy updates, coordination of off-street requirements and private parking lots, engagement and communication, administration and management of the system, revenue modeling and allocation of resources and cost estimates as well for the system. Technology adaptations and integration with other TDM strategies and order district plans for a sustainable transportation future. And I think I will pass the next steps to Dave. And thank you very much.
Thanks, Andres. Yeah, so that was a great summary. I just wanted to go through the next steps. What staff is proposing to how we proceed with this information that the consultant has provided with us with. So these are taken directly from the report, but I'll go through them here. So should council direct staff, we'll develop a scope to implement the recommendations that Morrison Herschfield has provided in the report. The scoping will consider the financial plan and the strategic plan objectives. And once we've gone through that, we will bring forward to council a proposed phased parking management implementation plan, PPMIP for short. For council's consideration, not really that short, but this plan will also include a few things. It'll include both sort of looking at the, the work in the downtown core that Morrison Herschfield's done for us, but also looking at some previous council direction on tourism-focused locations. So assessing, you know, how we could extend the work that Morrison Herschfield's done to these other potential tourism-focused locations. So that work would be included in this plan. It will also include obviously robust engagement with community and with business owners and other affected stakeholders. So just to put up on the screen, the staff recommendation that the District of Squamish receive the 2023 Downtown Parking Study Report for information and staff scope the 2023 Downtown Parking Study Report recommendations in consideration of the street strategic plan objectives and the financial plan, and bring forward to council a phased parking management implementation plan, which includes on-street paid parking and paid parking at tourism-focused locations for consideration. Very wordy, but there you have it. So with that, that concludes the presentation. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Mayor Hertford.
Thank you for the presentation and the work on this. I had a couple of questions just for clarity around sort of that reduced supply concepts in sort of the future state. I was wondering how the, sort of, the, the temporary decks and those types of things were factored into that? And was that a consideration? And is that a sizable enough factor to warrant any, any weight in, in this process?
Yeah, yes, it was a consideration. Like we, like I mentioned, the detailed inventory actually included those parklet or patio areas there. So then we're not like, so only note, like this, basically we're occupied spaces that were not accounted, I guess, as a supply because they're not utilized currently. We recommended part of that, some of our recommendations actually included to, we suggest to those who are working fine basically and to keep maintaining that program. And I think there was discussions about like, you know, it's after COVID and post-pandemic conditions, like those spaces are welcome and it's, it's a very well legitimate utilization of the curb space. And many cities are doing it. So this, it was considered and it worked fine and we didn't see any issue with that.
Okay, thank you. And then similarly, I suppose, we have some newer regulations around seasonal parking restrictions to facilitate snow removal. And was that in the residential areas and of the downtown amongst other places in the community? Is, was that factored into your demand modeling here as well? I know the study happened generally in the warmer months, but there's parking, substantial parking restrictions in the residential areas through, through the winter months. And were those accounted for in your, in your work?
The, well, it was very theoretical, I guess, at the, when we projected the future demand that is using industry standards. So they're somewhat generic, but then we, we actually calibrated those, the parking demand based on the conditions that we've found during the summer months. So, so yes, I guess to answer the question, seasonal adjustments were considered. That one specifically, I, I don't think so, but, but yeah, it's a good question. So we, we should, you know, we will consider that in the future if there is any other iteration. Like I know. the district is updating these plans every five years. So that will be definitely a good consideration to to keep in mind.
Okay, thank you. And just to follow up on that, I I live in the downtown on a street that has one of those restrictions. And I noticed that when the restrictions came into into effect, and it was our first season with it, that the laneways became far more activated. And how were the the laneways weren't sort of highlighted in any of your graphics, but the capacity or the use of those laneways and those parking options that are available sort of at the rear of of some of the residences, were those were those factored into your your work as well? Or how are we? I'm trying to understand how we would think about laneways going forward and their role in this in this.
I'm assuming like you are, or I'm thinking you're you're referring to private parking on the lanes behind some commercial lots. Or and that was an inventory. So basically that, you know, that that may be remaining supply that we haven't accounted for, but it's there. Some other, like for instance, on Logan's Lane, there is all this stretch of parking that it wasn't accounted for. So basically, the focus was on public on street, but lanes were not inventory and no parking on lanes was inventory and part of the study.
Just to follow on that on that point, in those those areas like the Loggers Lane piece, I'm aware that that row of parking is on private property that isn't actually the private property of the residents that it seems to be servicing. So is that factored into future demand as far as losing? That that may not always be available or for that for that use. Just trying to, I know we have to make a lot of assumptions when we do these projections, but there's if that was to become unavailable in short order, we'd have to address that overflow. There's that number of vehicles that potentially need need a spot. And just how are we thinking about those types of things?
Right. No, that's a great, great, great comment and great point. Again, like the the focus and the scope of this study was on public streets in the downtown core. We we mentioned when we defined the area, we discussed with administration that that Loggers Lane was not included because that hasn't been included before anyway. So it was private property and it wasn't included, but the demand, again, it was based on actual demand on Cleveland, Second Avenue and all the rest of the streets that use on the screen. So we are confident that, you know, we capture, you know, a good representative amount of parking in the downtown core that we could make predictions and.
Thanks very much, Councilman French.
Thanks, Chair. Who knew parking could be so riveting? This was great weekend reading for me and led me to go down parking rabbit holes outside of the report that I didn't expect to venture into. I'm curious, though, about something that Mr. Morrow, you touched on in your last comments. Parking outside of the downtown and specifically tourist oriented areas. This is something that former mayor Elliott liked to focus on when it came to parking was having visitors to our community help put back into our economy by having them pay for parking in places like Darryl Bay, the Adventure Center. And and I heard from you that maybe some other locations. I wonder if you could just expand a little bit more on those parking opportunities and how they fit into this work.
Thank you, through the chair. I would love to expand in great detail. However, I may not be able to at this point in time. We do, as I mentioned, we, the goal is with if this recommendation is supported to come back with a plan to start looking at these tourism focused locations. What could be done there from a, you know, paid parking perspective in particular? We haven't scoped where that could be possible. We sort of, there are some obvious locations that that could be investigated. We haven't done a fulsome review as to where where all of those locations might be. That will be part of this additional work that we'd be coming back to scope after this. But great question, and it's definitely an opportunity that we're interested in looking into.
Great. And I'm happy that it's on the radar, even if it's not front and center out of this report that we're working from now. And Chair, I I might have some follow up questions for questions that I'm anticipating from Councilor Stoner, but for now that's good.
With that, on to Councilor Stoner.
Thank you. Through the chair, thanks so much for the presentation and the study. A few questions. The first one is, I didn't actually see any particular call out in the study around accessible parking spaces. And I think that's one thing that we hear very frequently is ensuring that there is enough accessible parking spaces for those who are not able to walk the further distances. And I'm just wondering if you can speak to that at all in terms of the occupancy rates, especially as we start to think about potentially moving to a paid parking scheme. If there should be consideration for expanding or extending the number of accessible parking stalls.
Yes, thank you. We, the data is there. We, like I mentioned, especially in the downtown core, we inventory all the accessible parkings across residential and commercial downtown. On the downtown core, we each and every accessible, we actually have metrics on it. We did not explicitly mention it in the report, but that's certainly something that we can easily just go back and and give you occupancy rates of each individual parking accessible parking stall and turnover rates.
If I may add to that, thank you. We've also done, staff internally have done an accessibility plan recently. And that work dovetails well with this. It it went and inventoried all of the accessible stalls within the downtown area. Looked at their condition, location, et cetera. And work that will be coming out of that plan will look at identifying additional locations for accessible stalls, upgrades to existing accessible stalls and just sort of exactly what you're saying, trying to make them more available and easier to use.
Okay, that's really helpful and great to know that that's kind of dovetailing and will be considered as this project moves forward as well. My other question is, one of the things that we've talked a lot about in the context of downtown parking is our current policy that allows for new developments to buy out a certain number of parking stalls. And I'm just, from what I'm seeing in the report and my interpretation of it is there's actually sufficient residential parking, it seems like, like we're not seeing an overflow of residential parking onto onto street parking. But at the same time, we often hear, those are some of the folks that we hear from the most of there actually being issues is folks who are trying to park in residences and they feel like they don't have enough residential parking spaces in their buildings. So a twofold question. One, I'm curious if there's been any thought around whether the cash and loot and the ability to buy out parking spaces is kind of coming to a natural end for for future developments. Is that something that we need to consider revisiting our policy on? And then this, yeah, I'll leave that question. Start with that one.
Through the chair. That's a really good question. Previously, if you recall, we did a downtown parcade study, which sort of helped inform the amount of cash and loot we're doing. So that that was one piece of it. But to your point about the supply and whether we need to revisit that, I think that would be a question that we would probably need to to speak to the planning department about, and I'm not sure if that's in the works. We do know through some informal work that that staff have done that looking at in particular residential developments in the downtown area, that there is availability in the evenings in these in these, both in parcades, but also in on surface parking in these developments. So very great point, and we will definitely note that and come back to council.
Okay. And then just building on that, one of the other pieces is that was in the study was this concept of a residential exempt permit. And I think one of the things that I've often come to this conversation with is trying to level the playing field where you actually have people paying for the cost of a public space for their private use, especially in a residential space where they might be filling their garage with a bunch of stuff and they prefer to park their vehicle on street or vice versa. They don't want to pay for the additional parking space that's provided in the parcade of their new building. And so they're going to park for free on the street. The recommendation in this study, from my perspective, the residential exempt permit was the proposal is like thirty to forty dollars a year, which feels fairly low if we're trying to look at it from an equity perspective of paying a fair share for public use of space. And so I'm just wondering if you can provide some further context on where that number comes from for the thirty to forty dollars for the residential exempt permit and what the motivations are for where you might want to try and peg that dollar value on an annual basis.
Yeah. Essentially, the we 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 looked at that was sort of the range number in other jurisdictions and like Banff, Canmore, Pentington. So the scheme, the recommended price levels, I guess, it will be obviously up for discussion and but yeah, I I just agree. I agree with you like, you know, that this if you don't encourage people to pay their fair share for using public space for private purposes, so you know, that's that's part of the whole strategy of making downtown more accessible, more equitable and promoting basically alternative modes of transportation. And you can, like Dave was mentioning, it's a phase strategy that it depending on the local context and what the sort of reaction of residents in the area. But I think in many jurisdictions of similar size, it has been implemented successfully. And they still have some privileges, you know, but it's just register their their vehicles and and just getting this permit that will enable them to use the the street.
Just one more quick question on the staff recommendation in the motion. I'm unclear if the proposal suggests that there would be money in the twenty twenty four budget for the startup implementation? Or is this something that would come back at a later date? I'm just curious, given that we're in the midst of budget, if that's something that can get turned around for the twenty twenty four budget to start implementation.
Yes, through the chair. We do have funds available in twenty twenty three for that haven't been earmarked to specific works at this point in time. So those funds could be used to help start develop the scoping.
Yes, Ms. Glende.
Thank you very much. Through the chair, I would like to add that the scoping itself will come back to council in terms of understanding its priority against the current strategic plan. So staff would not implement in advance of recognizing what shifts may or may not have to happen if council endorses the the project.
Thanks very much. Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. There in the pattern observed of how long people are using these stalls through the day, three, four, five hours. Do we note or can we determine the presence of employee parking? A few years ago, some local businesses on Cleveland Avenue were putting together a proposal concerning employee parking. Didn't quite make it to council, but perhaps they may be prepared to sit and with staff. And I guess my question is, can we do more work to determine this picture of employee parking? And will our engagement plan be able to take this topic into account?
I can just briefly mention that, yes, you eventually part of a similar study scope, you if you do like a parking demand survey with businesses, you will be able to gather that kind of information. How many employees are there? Who is parking? Who has a car? What kind of demand is needed for employees? But it wasn't part of the scope, so we didn't get to that level of engagement with the business district and.
Please, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Just to build on that, specific to your point about engagement. As mentioned, we would absolutely engage with business owners, business owners downtown, and that would be a key piece of information that we'd be looking for.
I'll just observe that this initiative a few years ago was a group of businesses. And sometimes you can have more, you know, brainstorming and synergies by working with, for example, the BIA or encouraging groups of business owners in a in a Pacific location to come forward. As something that we shouldn't miss in an engagement process. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Greenlaw.
Thanks. Through the chair, I'm just, I'd like to have a little bit more clarification of how you came up with the reduced number of parking stalls for the five year projection. And specifically, does it include the fifty spaces that are on Bailey Street that is that's going to be developed? I think it does.
That number, I don't know the specific location where that reduction came from, but that was the number that we were informed that even potentially could be reduced by taking away angle parking. So I'm not a hundred percent sure if that comes from the street that you're mentioning, but but that that overall number is just lowering the existing supply by a number of stalls that was provided to us. Not sure about the geographic location specifically, but.
If I may add to that, we actually did take a look at, we we spent a lot of effort internally, actually, with the GIS team and the planning department, looking at all the developments in stream that could potentially go forward within the next five years, as Andres mentioned earlier. And we looked at specifically where they're located, what street franchises they had and provided an estimate based on similar developments that have happened downtown. How many stalls we would lose with those developments? I I don't have in front of me exactly which ones were considered. I I don't want to speak to whether that one was or not because I can't recall, but we definitely did a detailed look at development by development.
Okay. And when you reduce the number of parking stalls, did you also add those cars to the current parking demand? Okay, thanks. And then there is one other thing that I wanted to mention, like I know from my experience driving downtown, one of the main reasons why I would drive downtown and park on Cleveland is to access my mail. And I was wondering if there had been any lobbying on behalf of staff or the municipality to like Canada Post to get more of those community boxes? Because that would be a huge reduction, both here and at Garibaldi Village for people, not only with emissions, but also parking strains downtown.
Through the chair, no, but that's an excellent suggestion.
Thanks.
Thanks very much, Counselor Peddingill.
Yeah, thanks. And I I take it if we proceed with what's recommended, there'll be a lot more monitoring and observation and sort of watching what happens with the parking. But as a starting point, I I was a little bit uncertain that sort of one weekday and one weekend day would give us a representative understanding of the current situation. I'm just wondering if you can speak to sort of a typical margin of error we might expect in in that sample size, those two days, like, is that an industry standard? And we know within plus or minus two percent that actually is representative, or I'm just wondering if you can speak to that.
Yes. The the dates that the data collection was conducted were thoroughly discussed with the with administration. So like the summer, summer activity was seen as very representative of what this will typically look like. Now, after that, like we we look at industry standards and specifically hours during the day, what percentage, like what will be the peak during those hours? And then the seasonality of similar municipalities as well in terms of the demand. So the Urban Land Institute and the IT, the International Transport, the Institute of Transportation Engineers has some manuals that on similar municipalities, they know what sort of the demand year, like seasonal month by month. But based on historic data. So so yes, we we did look at like, you only have this, the two spots, as you mentioned, on two snapshots in the summer. But we look at adjustments throughout the whole year based on industry standards.
Okay. And so we.
Okay, and so we would expect if we had sort of gone out for two weeks straight and still then applied the prorating through rest of the year, the sort of day-to-day variation, we're confident that that would be relatively insignificant. And sort of one day each gives us enough to feel very secure. This is, this is representative.
Oh, yes. Yeah. Yeah, like I mentioned, we cannot, typically, you don't plan for, like, you cannot plan all your infrastructure based on the peak demand of the year. That would be an over, overdue typically considered. But, but we did take that high period of demand during the summer based on our discussion with administration, understanding that you, you will expect that to be sort of the peak season, but then having those shoulder seasons as well model and incorporate into a model. So you can have, essentially, now you can, or administration can go to each and every month and know what's the relationship between the, the summer counts that we took and maybe in the shoulder season, what will be the expected demand as well. So you have a whole year demand projection and forecasting done. You can look at any time over the year.
Okay, thank you. And then just, I'm still unclear from the conversation. And I see in the recommendations, there's recommendations that we encourage private lot owners to open up spaces to the public and find ways to do that. But in terms of counting current supply of spots, do those current numbers include spots in private lots at this point? Or those were counting only public spots at this point in time?
Only public spots.
Okay, so if we sort of consider our recommendations, there's actually probably a significant larger number of actual spots, public and private combined downtown right now?
Yeah, like Mayor mentioned before, there's lane parking, there is private, private parking lots that were not part of the supply. But again, like, the whole concept of Park One's walk district is just to have a pool of supply, private and public, that can be better utilized and more efficiently and optimized in the future.
Okay, got a couple more if I can? Okay, do one more for now. I'm just wondering more from a legal perspective, because one of the things I worry about is, you know, we use a financial incentive to get people out of vehicles, encourage them to find other modes, and then to fund, you know, the cost of this infrastructure. But that impacts different people differently, and so could result in economic exclusion or disparities. Are there, you know, from a broad technological sense, it's possible not only to look at a license plate, but what vehicle are you driving? How much does it cost? And therefore, this is what we're going to charge you. And, you know, maybe there's EV versus ICE charges. Do you know if that sort of thing is legal, or is anyone doing that? Have, have those systems been built so you can consider some of those other things and have a bit more equity in your parking, paid parking system?
Yeah, just to clarify, the, so the, the paid parking scheme is, is, is really intended to have the right price level at which you, people, any, any, anyone can find certain number of spots in a certain street. So if you, if you price it too high, then nobody's going to park. You have a hundred percent availability to view part. If you price it too low, then you will have just plenty of parking. Sorry, if you, yeah, you just have some, you know, people, very little available spaces. So in terms of equity, yes, that, that's a consideration now, obviously, that you need to look at socioeconomic conditions in your population, who is actually going to pay for the resident permit program. You can have, there are municipalities that have subsidies. There are special permits for people that are giving care to family members or medical services that need to visit your, your, your house. So you essentially can tailor those needs. But it's, it's possible, and it's been, it's been doing in many other jurisdictions right now, like Banff and Canmore. So, yeah.
So, okay, just thank you. Following up on that, the, it's sort of recommended that you keep fifteen, your demand pricing automatically keeps fifteen percent of spots free in general. But we did, and the report does talk to our goal of doing that mode shift. Might we target twenty percent or so on to sort of push that mode shift a little bit harder? Or is fifteen really, for many reasons, a magic number? Like, because, you know, in my mind, I'd like to push it maybe to twenty percent or?
Yeah, it's an industry sort of guideline. But yeah, it's, it's certainly up to the local context that you can push that harder. Making, yeah, it's just, it's, it's, it's not only the parking, the parking, parking is just one component of having a more integrated, sustainable transportation system. Yeah, parking pricing, it's, it's one piece. And you can, the pricing scheme, again, is, is just contextualized to your local conditions.
Thanks very much. I'm going to take an opportunity right to ask a couple of questions myself before we go, attempt to go around the table again, being mindful we've got a few minutes left and still need a motion. So my philosophy on parking has come a lot from Donald Shoup's High Cost of Free Parking, a book I'm sure you're familiar with. The philosophy can be broken down into the idea of fair market price for parking, spending the revenue that you receive from the parking in the area, that you receive the parking, that the parking exists in, and removing off-street parking requirements. I'd like to sort of summarize parking, and this took me a little bit to think about. Parking is sort of like ice cream. If the district were to give ice cream away for free, it would be pretty hard to run an ice cream shop in town. Yeah? If the district required every commercial entity to give ice cream away for free, it would be impossible to run an ice cream shop in town. Not only that, every time you bought a hamburger or a pair of jeans, you would be forced to get an ice cream, pay for an ice cream, whether you wanted it or not. So do you foresee, or is there any thought given to how our zoning regulations regarding parking might be able to change as we implement paid parking throughout, if we implement paid parking throughout the downtown?
Yeah, off-street parking requirements are an essential component of this. So when you provide too much off-street parking, then people are more encouraged to drive, obviously. And like we said, there is inefficiencies in use of that space. Some people just use it as a storage and then park on the street for free, like it was mentioned before. So again, I think it's, 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 we recommend it to those off-street parking requirements by bylaw will need to be revisited as well. And some municipalities are reducing them, just, or completely eliminating those to essentially promote more sustainable active transportation. But, but there is still a place, I think, for curb space in municipalities of this context. Because busy tourists, obviously, when they come from far away, they will probably come driving. But if you provide a sufficient amount of parking to, for them to be able to park once and then just walk and enjoy the downtown walking, or even in micro traffic, the scooters, electric scooters and micro mobility, as the term is called now. But I think it would be a part of a, like, like I mentioned before, a more sustainable transportation downtown system.
Great, thanks very much. And if folks have quick questions, I know Mayor Herford, you had one. Counselor Anderson, are there any other quick questions? Counselor Stoner, so please make your questions brief, and your responses as brief as possible as well. Thank you.
Actually, my question is going to be around the employee parking, and if, whether it was its own category, but that was addressed through an earlier question, so I'll move on.
Counselor Anderson?
Thank you. I'm looking at figure fifteen in the report. It's on page twenty-nine, anticipated development parcels over the next five years within the study area. And it's this simple typology highlighting commercial sites. We do not have a downtown neighborhood plan. We tried to put one together in two thousand eight and two thousand eleven, two thousand fourteen. We do not have that type of a vision for downtown and its functions and purposes for the community at large completed. We did what we could to incorporate in the OCP. Back in two thousand, the downtown two thousand plan, in contrast, looking at this map, had a ferry terminal. It had a civic gathering facilities and the down two thousand five charrette the same. It's very interesting to superimpose, and my point is, or really my observation or question, is that these different nuances of institutional types of facilities, multimodal facilities, have parking implications. How can we take this into account? These are other complementary planning processes, but hopefully we can look through in those processes at the parking implications. We had a ferry terminal at the foot of Main Street for twenty-five years, up till the early two thousands. And we could have different vessels come there today. Talked about now and then as a downtown auditorium or performing arts. These have parking implications. Can we, in this project or in other complementary initiatives, supplement that map to build the nuanced picture of the, our parking demands and needs that base more on a vision, not within five years, but what we know, the functions that might be desired or appropriate for downtown? Thank you.
Through the mayor, that too is a great point. Specifically to this report, obviously, that wasn't in the scope of, of the consultant's work. But I think your, your point about looking holistically and bigger picture, you know, we have the oceanfront development coming up, which is an extension of the downtown and is going to have a lot of similar facilities. So I agree that this, this report, I think, provides the, the framework and, and a look forward in the current anticipated five-year timeframe. But, you know, planning staff internally have been heavily involved in the production of this report and, and the analysis of the data. So I think moving forward, this report and the work that Andres has and his team have done will be a good basis to help when we're looking at this bigger picture, sort of downtown, long-term planning, what could potentially be down there. I think this work will, will provide a good foundation, like I said, to, to be able to make informed decisions as we move forward and plan appropriately.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks very much, Counselor Stoner.
Thank you. My last question is just one of the recommendations and the key next steps is around a communication strategy and public engagement. And we're not unique in our community, that parking is one of probably the most hot topics to be discussed. So I'm just curious if you have seen any best practices on ideas for engagement, things that have gone really well in other communities that we might be able to learn from as we potentially pursue this opportunity?
Yeah, I mean, if this, just going back to like the, the sort of the horizon that we look at here was fairly limited to a five-year sort of horizon. But when you're looking at a longer term, more holistic engagement and parking plan, I think it would be very important to engage with the business district, the BIA, as well as residents. And so you would have mentioned, I, I, like, there's similar studies that include a parking resident and commercial survey, like actual survey that you can have online and which you will understand, this is only sort of a capacity, very, very technical, I guess, operation of and your, your supply versus demand. But like, knowing what the uses are, what people's attributes and so the function of these parking to residents and business will be important to know at that level.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Do you have another question, or are you?
I was going to move the staff recommendation, put a motion on the floor, if that's helpful.
Fantastic, that would be helpful. Will you be moving the?
Both, both staff recommendations that are presented in the report.
Seconded by Counselor French. Would you like to speak to the motion? Just remind everybody to, we're over time right now, so just keep your comments short if possible.
Yeah, thanks for this update. This is a report and a study that we've been anticipating for a long time, and so it's great to see it come to council and to have the numbers to start to engage our community in this conversation around how we better manage the parking and the expectations around parking, especially in the downtown core. I am really supportive of putting this motion on the floor and the recommendation. And I am personally very supportive of trying to bring this forward through the 2024 budget for implementation, at least for discussion and understanding and where the context is that falls within the 2023 to 2026 strategic plan priorities. But especially the revenue models that were presented in the report. To me, this is not necessarily a revenue generating and project or ambition, but it is going to be something that's going to allow us to pay for things like we know that we really need, like transit expansion. But also engaging our community on where they might want to see those dollars go. There's a huge gap there, and I think that this is just one fair way to create more equity within our community. But to me, some of those key components on the paid parking scheme as we go forward is that engagement with community, public participation, the accessibility and the equity lens that we take to implementing that strategy, being clear about where the revenues will go. And I think also identifying where those visitor and tourist locations are, where we can also implement paid parking. And Mr. Merrow, you mentioned the oceanfront, and that's one that I think we need to have paid parking out there from the opening of that park. And I will say that every time this comes up. But I think that that is the timeline that I'm working towards, is how do we get there so that we can start to generate that behavior from the outset as opposed to change it over time? So those are my comments for now, and I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor French.
Thanks, Chair. I like what I see in the recommendations within this report, and I think that this motion since sets us in a direction that I fully support. And I'll add one more thought to this. The fifteen-minute reference in the report caused me concern. It's a conspiracy red flag, and I think we do well to stay away from that phrase.
Thank you, Counselor Pedengill.
Yeah, thanks. Also happy to support this. I just want to make two comments. One, just in the discussion, it sounded like some of the tourism focus might be a little further down the road. I think we should consider bringing that a little bit closer. There are some areas and some quick wins that I think we should be considering. And so just put that out there, is I'd like to see something about how we might move that forward sooner rather than later. And then I just, you know, watching some of the online discussion on this, it, it made me really think that as part of engagement, we need to clarify expectations. And I think we've really pushed, and we talked about it in the report. It's the idea that every building has to have their own parking. The public space is your public space in front of your business, and we have this my parking, and everyone has their individualized. But that actual public spot is not your spot. It's a public spot. It's not free. We have to figure out how to pay for it. And when we stick with this mentality, everyone has their own individual parking, there's a whole lot of wasted capacity. We, we see, although there are specific streets, and I think this is what sticks out in people's mind when it's overflowing and very busy, in general, we have quite a lot of capacity. And so I think people need to understand is, what we're trying to do here is, is manage that existing capacity, which is significant in a better way. And yeah, just make much better use of, of this space. And so I'm excited to see us heading down that road. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor Herford.
Thank you. Speaking in support of the motion, I think this is a critical piece of work. And, and I'm confident that we are working with good information going forward. I do think that the, particularly the five-year projections, which to me sort of sets the urgency for this, I find a little challenging, given that, I understand the methodology as explained during, during the meeting. But there are areas where, where a lot of public use is occurring on private land, which isn't accounted for here. And some of those private lands are considered for development going forward. So I think that the, the, that five-year projection, although helpful, and it does indicate that we need, we should get to work on addressing this, the challenges that are sort of coming our way. I think that that's sort of the lightest load that we're going to see. I think it's a bit optimistic that way, which is, which is fine. I understand. I understand the methodology and how we got there. But we need to layer in that other, that sort of displacement effect of some of these developments or potential developments or land use changes in, in areas where we're seeing a fair, a large capacity of parking happening, occurring on these private lands. So it just highlights that we have work to do and rather urgently. I do think that the, the, sort of the holistic approach to the downtown in, maybe in that same five-year horizon, when we're talking about downtown, we're going to be talking about the oceanfront. It's not going to be the downtown and the oceanfront. It's the downtown, which will be inclusive of the oceanfront. So holistic approach there, I think, is really, is really crucial so that we set ourselves up for success and that all of the businesses and the residents in our new downtown are operating in, from sort of the same, the same baseline and working with the same constraints going forward. And I look forward to looking at the next steps and seeing how this fits into our strategic plan and budgeting processes going forward. So thank you so much for the work.
Thank you, Counselor Anderson.
Thank you. I'm particularly pleased to see the commitment to robust, a robust engagement process in this project. The project we have or the report before us is a part of the picture, a big part of the picture. But it, there are other complementary pieces of work that it refers to and that need to be taken care of. I'm referring to supply enhancement is a section of the report. The report refers to the Parcade Study and points out its status of its outcomes. There's unfinished business there. It also refers to the OCP policy of parking inventory and utilization, securing a location for shared parking facilities, multimodal hub, and so on. This is other kinds of supply-side solutions that we must necessarily look at. We have a lot of small lots downtown. They need a collective neighborhood solution, most likely. So hopefully, this will be seen to be part of the picture, but an important one, and hopefully a success. Thank you.
Thanks, and Counselor Greenlaw.
Thanks, through the chair. I just want to say thank you for the report and the presentation. It is obviously parking is a huge conversation in this community, so it's good to see some traction moving forward in this one. I am a little bit concerned about some of the figures that were put forward for the five-year prediction. And also, I'd really like to see that report that the district provided. I think that would be very great to have myself. But I do wonder if there's, if it's a little bit of an artificially low representation of what it might be, because I suspect there are about 200 parking spots in addition to this that will be gone, and then approximately 150 cars that will be added to the pool as well. So I think that's, that's something that, that should be kept in mind for sure. And also, I think it would be really interesting to push for some community mailboxes, because I think that would be an easy way to reduce parking strain downtown. That is at the expense of the federal government. Thank you very much. So, yeah, thanks, thanks for all the work.
Thanks very much. And just before I call the question, I'll put in my own last comment. Just like ice cream, I do like parking, but I don't expect to get either of them for free from the District of Squamish. So with that, I will call the question. All those in favor of the staff recommendation? Thank you. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thanks very much. Counselor Stoner?
I'd like to put forward a motion to terminate.
Would anybody like to second Counselor Stoner's? Mayor Hereford, motion to terminate. All those in favor? Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Meeting terminated. Have a great afternoon.